I'd like to call to order the meeting of Lake Forest Community High School District 115, Board of Education on Tuesday, October 8th. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Edson?
Here.
Mr. Mormon?
Here.
Mr. Block?
Here.
Mr. Schreiber?
Here.
Mr. Powers? Mr. Bergner?
Here. So now we're back after last month's meeting that followed as long a break during the year as we can hope to have. We're back following about as short a break as you can hope to have during the course of the school year. And as a result of the short gap between our meetings, we've got a relatively light agenda, a couple of good reports, and just a couple of words I'd like to share. I had the privilege last week of welcoming eight students from our sister school in Shanghai as well as a teacher. They represent the third or fourth group of students coming from China in an exchange program that's been going on for the last six years. Our students will be traveling to China next spring. And as I'm learning more about this program, it's increasingly evident what an interesting program it is and what a great opportunity for learning it is for our students, as well as, from what I gather, our lifelong friendships that are established among the families of the stu- and the students who are doing the traveling. Additionally, we had a Joint Shared Services Committee meeting on September 23rd. This is a meeting or a group also more commonly known as JSSC. We met with Dick Block and myself representing 115, and Bill Anderson and Jeff Fulker representing District 67, really to learn more about what JSSC means to us today, get some reminders about how it's structured, the laws under which it's enabled it to exist, and learn more about the services and functions that are shared among our two districts. Mike reviewed the intergovernmental agreement that defines the governments and scope of services and cost allocations and things like that with us. He also reviewed the interaction and alignment of various employment agreements that exist and the subordinate delineating agreements that exist between the employing district and the partner district within the shared service. So, for example, the superintendent has an employment agreement with District 67 and a delineating agreement between 67 and 115 that define how we share the services of that superintendent and the costs associated with those services. What's clear when you look at Joint Shared Services, and I know it can be kind of a hot-button topic, is that it provides a great deal of value for us. And while in aggregate, some of our compensation numbers, for example, look like they're on the high side, when you look at it and break it down on a district-by-district basis, we fall well within the benchmarks for the market. And what it enables us to do, I think, and what we've seen a great deal of in the last several months, is attract and hire and retain some of the highest-quality people that are available in the market. And so while there's some ongoing debate about the levels of compensation and administration, and it's not an appropriate debate, I think we all need to remind ourselves of the context of shared services, the focus that we have in addition to fiscal responsibility on the quality of the services that are being provided by our districts, and recognizing the high level of quality that exists here. I think this group is one that really helps bring that back into focus for us. And so where we left it with Mr. Hernandez is that he will begin drafting an updated version, a modernized version, of the intergovernmental agreement that establishes and enables the Joint Shared Services to exist, and we'll move forward from there, continuing as we have since 2004. Mr. Block, I'm not sure if you've got anything to add about JSSC or not, but if so...
No, I think you've covered it quite well. I would just reiterate what you said about cost savings. After having lived with the evolving shared services program since mid-2004, I think all of us associated with the district are convinced that it saves significant money and allows, as you pointed out, the hiring of and engagement of people of high quality that support us well. Just second that.
Thank you. That's it for my president's report. Is there a superintendent's report?
Yes, sir, and I'd like to hand off to Mr. Rogers to begin.
Good evening, everyone. Our team is working on developing ideas for a new school day schedule for the 2014-2015 school year, and as we move forward, we'll be engaging all of our stakeholders, including our parents, students, our teachers, our teachers' association, of course, the Board of Ed, and the larger community. We hope to be able to provide some mock schedules for your consideration at the November meeting. We'll also be looking for an approval sometime in the December-to-January timeframe. I'm very excited about the prospects of a new schedule because it allows for, I think, some more dynamic learning experiences, and I think it really came out of the work of our students and our faculty. This week, we are hosting our junior-senior school play, "While the Lights Were Out," and it's October 10 through 12, 7:00 p.m. Our school president, Kate Wally, is unable to make it because she is one of the starring roles in the play, so she sends her regrets tonight. As President Bergner mentioned, we are hosting eight students and a teacher from our sister school in Shanghai, Normal University High School, number two. They'll be departing on the 13th. Kelly McKee is our teacher, and I just want to mention what a great job she's done. She is a teacher and not our Mandarin teacher, as you would think, but just a teacher who has really taken an interest in the Chinese culture and Chinese language and has put it upon herself to learn this and share her passion for Chinese culture and language with our students, so I laud her. November 11th, we'll be hosting Assembly for Veterans Day, and all members of the community are welcome. In conjunction with the event, the American Legion is sponsoring an essay contest. The winning essay will be read at the event. We hope to have a great event in honoring our veterans and really, you know, creating important civics lessons for all of our students. And last but not least, this is a time where our sports teams are in the heat of battle. We've got great teams, you know, from tennis to football, doing great things, so I encourage everyone to get out there. And I know I've been out there enjoying our athletes and seeing them in a different light. So, go Scouts. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. I'd also like to add one aspect of that very exciting event last week. It was homecoming, and one of the things that Mr. Rogers did is he made it in mandatory assembly. So, almost everyone was there, and it was a jam-packed gym, and according to one staff member, has been on faculty for 24 years, hands-down the best school assembly ever. So, or the best pep assembly ever. So, a lot of noise, kids led the entire thing, had three student leaders out there revving up the crowd, and student dancing silly and goofy, and all really very exciting and a lot of fun. For the superintendent's report, a couple of things to update on, one of those being the work done on mission and vision and goals. Mr. Rogers, Mr. Edson, Mrs. Whipple, and from District 67, Mrs. Clemmensen, we have interviewed four companies to date. The last of those will be on Friday, and have created an evaluation matrix for that. Among the things that we're looking for is somebody who is able to facilitate effectively his proven process that unleashes innovation and ability to build team dynamics, a consensus builder that supports engaging with all the stakeholders, credible also with all the stakeholders. Third thing, an educational understanding, somebody that has experience with both the public sector and preferably the private sector, so there's a mix of experiences there. And then also the ability to determine how to coordinate between District 67 and District 115. They are separate districts, and how we go about that, and they serve different student populations and community populations, and so how to facilitate that effectively. Fourth, the vision-execution, how to bring the message to life visually and can provide creative guidance for that. Bench strength, so to what extent do they have the ability, if their schedule changes, the project can continue? And finally, the budget, a reasonable cost and value relationship to that. So we'll be making a decision and then letting, creating a timeline for the execution of the creation of mission, vision, goals. It's not completely clear yet in which order the districts will work through those two things, but we want it to be coordinated, but certainly not a mere image one of the other. Another thing that we're doing related to the mission and vision goals is thinking about what kind of metrics our parents value and our stakeholders value in general. We had a conversation with the group the other day, and one of the things that is, that was interesting to come out of discussion with elementary parents is some of the things that they value are not things that are measured in terms of dollars and cents or in terms of test scores, but one of the things that they place a very high value on is low class size for K3 in particular, but across the board, and that is a sign of quality and value for them. From our high school group, we heard a variety of different things. One of those, the percentage of students that have a place and the enjoyment that they have of being where they are, of being in school. And so these are things that can come out in a climate survey. They are things that are measurable, but they're not related to a specific number. Another one of the things that was of great interest were things that come under the umbrella of habits of mind, so real-world applications, teamwork, creativity, resilience, all those things, those lifelong skills they see as being very valuable. The four-, five-year college completion rate, so what percentage of our students have completed a degree at four, or five, or six years, and we've already done some research on companies that do that for districts, and so we can get that. Percentage of students participating in open doors and liking it, again, those are things that are measurable. And finally, the most, perhaps the most obvious to many people are ACT scores, but that might not be the place that they go first. Something that matters, but one of the things that we hear from kindergarten through 12th grade is that they expect the academics to be a given, and the reason that they're here are for reasons other than just getting a sound education. They want them to grow up to be happy, healthy, and productive. So those are the question of what the community places value on and how we can measure that is an ongoing conversation and a very interesting one. And with that, conclude my superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Simic. It's now time for public participation. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to address the board, now is the time to do so among this crowd? No? Thank you for being here, anyway. Being done, we can move on to reports and discussion. Mr. Schreiber, would you please share your report on EdRed?
Yes, thank you. I had, Todd gave me the fun assignment of being the liaison to EdRed, and what EdRed is, is their mission and their vision. Their mission is a united voice advocating for the diverse needs of suburban schools, and their vision is to be a premier education policy resource for Illinois legislators and EdRed members. So they had, they had three meetings in this past month, and I think we've got three more next month, so it's turning out to be a very interesting, but quite a commitment. The first meeting was on September 20th, and it included a panel of state representatives, including our state rep, Scott Drury, who's a Democrat, Highland Park, 58th District. And so they asked the panel a variety of questions, including what's working in Springfield? People were curious if anything was working. And it was interesting comment that they made, they said the committee process is one of the things that is really effective and across the aisle of cooperation in the actual volume of legislation, which, you know, I don't see and I don't know that the media really covers that, but they all felt, all three of them felt like that was, those were the positives. In terms of some of the things that Scott Drury's working on, he's working on initiative related to special ed and the IEP process, as he considers the current process to be slow and expensive. He's looking to set up local working groups around this effort, but as of yet has no pending legislation to bring forward. Regarding unfunded mandates, these are still a real problem. Each of the representatives acknowledged this. Revenue is currently up for the state, but the temporary tax increase is supposed to be just that. Pensions are a major threat, and Drury has concerns about the details of this pending proposal. There's supposed to be a proposal for pensions that's supposed to come out any time now. Even with the newly-added actuarial review having been complete, he's got some questions about the details. He also discussed the cost shift for pensions to the districts, that he's against it because the benefits are still dictated at Springfield, even if the obligations, which are driven by the salaries, are dictated at the district level. His understanding is that there should not be a pension proposal out in the next, his understanding is that there should be a pension proposal out in the next few weeks, but that cost shift would not be a part of it, and each one of the representatives sort of had the same take on that. Incidentally, the other, the other rep from Arlington, representative from Arlington Heights, does think there should be a gradual cost shift to the districts. His concern is over backloaded savings, so how that would be shaped up really would be his, his primary concern. And then Representative Welch from Hillside does not see a shift likely. He believes the issue is revenue, not benefits, in favor as a change in the tax model, from flat tax to graduated or fair tax model. And then regarding the progressive tax, Drury is not in favor of this because, again, he's not seen any detail. So Scott Drury is, he's a freshman representative and sounds like a person that's been pretty good about collecting the details before he weighs in on any sort of strong position. So that was the, the meeting on the 20th. The, the next meeting was on September 24th, and it was understanding the new report card. So there's a new report card coming out, the current one, which is going to replace Northern Illinois hosted interactive report card, and that's at iirc.niu.edu. It's, it's been criticized, I think, a bit in terms of its usability, and so this new report card that's going to be illinoreportcard.com, supposed to launch on October 31st, will have a lot of the same data. The biggest update is going to be the user interface, and they have been going through some iterations of what that would look like. I'm going to, I'm going to pass this around. You can kind of take a look. It's supposed to be a one-page report card. The, the metrics on the front are the same for each one of the school districts, and the data on the back allows for unique characteristics of our school. So the principal would be able to submit some of the information that maybe is difficult to measure, some of the softer attributes that we would want to call out. They are trying to add a broader set of data called, including the Five Essentials Survey. I guess we don't really have to go into the details of that. I told Todd I would keep this inside of a half hour. Just kidding. And then on, on the 24th, we had a finance legislation meeting, and here they discussed a number of things. They've created a education funding advisory committee, and this was to review the distribution of general state aid. They talked about charter school funding tasks, task force, to review the effect of state-authorized charter schools on students served by the charter, the students in the homeschool district, and the homeschool district budget. Apparently, some of the districts have had multiple applications for charter schools, and every time they reject the charter school, the charter school updates their proposal and continues to tune it up and tune it up, and there's apparently no limitation how often you can apply for those, and it's, and it's creating some difficulties in certain districts. And then HR 543 Common Core, there was a bill introduced or a proposal introduced in August with 10 sponsors to encourage a delay in, until the Illinois State Board of Education determines the costs associated with Common Core and the park tests. Other issues under review, the 70/30 rule, which suggests when you get to 31% of the class being special needs, that an instructor, a second instructor be added, and they want, apparently this, some people want this rule included to take away some of the discretion that the administration has in determining when a second instructor needs to be added to an environment like that. Modifications to Senate Bill 7, which, and PERA is under review. The new, new school report card, which I just shared. Township treasures, apparently there was a township treasurer that was recently accused of embezzling $1.5 million, so there are some districts that would like to back away from, from that model. And then block grant funding for CPS. The, the last thing that I wanted to call out was a little bit more detail on the pension and the cost shift, because that was sort of a underlying theme, not so much at the report card session, but certainly at the first session with the state representatives in this finance legislation meeting. The rumor is that while not, not, not to be part of this next proposal, the cost shift, that is, that it will be part of discussions in early 2014. The union proposal, Senate Bill 2404, will provide for about a third of the savings for what, from what is expected in this new proposal. So the, the previous proposal may provide for savings in the neighborhood of 30 to 40, well, I, I don't have the exact numbers here, but a third of what the new proposal would provide. But anything other than the union proposal is going to face serious challenges in the court. And I asked the executive director for Ed, from EdRed to comment on what the implications are for us as a district, and she said that for the last two years, they've largely, they've largely settled on the idea that if we shift the normal cost of pensions to school districts, the district responsibility would increase by no more than a half a percent each year. This isn't solid until, until a bill passes, but it continues to be the rate at which they cite. We don't know what the normal cost will be if, when the legislator passes a pension reform bill, so we don't know how long the phase win will be. Currently, the normal cost is hovering at 7% to 9%. And so at half percent, it'd take us 18 years to get up to that level, but those are some of the things that sound like while they're not going to be in this next proposal are still top of mind, including from one of the representatives in that first panel. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Schreiber. Are there any questions from other members? Mr. Simic?
Yeah, Mr. Schreiber, if you could go over the time commitment related to this, because that's one of the things that is often unseen by the public, is how much time is spent outside of a meeting like this preparing? And if you wouldn't mind talking about some of your big takeaways, because you're a new school board member, and you must be learning a lot, and so if you could tell us like the top three aha moments for you so far?
Sure. I, I would say in terms of the, the time commitment in general, I've actually gotten this question from, from a few different folks that were monitoring the, the election, you know, how's it going so far? And I'd say that there's every Sunday morning, you know, setting aside an hour, maybe, maybe two, to go over a board report that's come out to make sure that I've come in prepared with, with the right questions. Subcommittee meetings, we have four or five of those scheduled, and, and again, an agenda that comes out in advance, so I think like anything else, most of the heavy lifting comes in the preparation for it. And so I would say with the EdRed responsibilities, that it's something in the neighborhood of maybe eight hours a month in terms of total commitment, but enjoying every minute of My takeaways in terms of the, the role of being a new school board member?
Now, the, from EdRed, if you're looking at the top three aha moments that you've had?
Well, the aha, I'd say the biggest thing is that the, the challenges that we're facing as a state, there, there are no real crisp answers that I heard from, from our state representatives. There, there are people like us that are facing some, some really tough challenges, and the fact that we, to borrow a term from you, Mike, having a seat at the table, I think, is, is really important, to make sure that we're represented. Things like general state aid and how those things are being decided and distributed based on what the local school district's ability to pay are, we want to make sure that we, we are raising our hand and asking the right questions and not having some of these decisions made without our participation. So that's a big thing. And I, I think the, the other thing is the EdRed provides really, I feel like, an advanced feedback mechanism for us on these, these things that are coming. Reading about it in the paper for, for us as a board with the financial responsibility we've got for the district, that's too late, and so I think that's another big takeaway.
When I was first on the board, I was the EdRed liaison, and I have to say, I don't think we ever had three meetings in a month, so my hat's off to you, Dave.
I, I would agree with Nikki. I almost feel like I should apologize for, for throwing you into a...
It's a hazing, I thought, as well.
Well, I, I'm, I'm looking up and down the table and realizing that Mr. Powers is probably our next volunteer for, for EdRed. But it's seriously, I'm curious about the volume, when considering the volume of, of work, if, if September was an unusual month, or if you can anticipate that kind of volume going into the year further, and if so, is consistency of representation from the district at that table something that is important, or would it make more sense to shift some of the burden up and down the table so that, A, you're not carrying the full load, and B, we all get some exposure to this that might help?
I, I think it's very educational. A lot of the people that are attending are actually people like Jen Hermes or, or Alan, and then there's, there are retired superintendents and, and board members, but I think we, if someone, if I couldn't make it, I think it would be important, if possible, that someone be able to attend, and just, just from an education perspective. As I look at the, the schedule that's coming up, there's a meeting on Tuesday, the 15th, so it's coming Tuesday, November 1st, December 6th, January 17th, January 27th. So I would say that September was unusually busy, but there are some other, there are some, for instance, November 15th... some, for instance, November 1st, there's another finance legislation meeting focused on state pension reform. And at the end of the last meeting, there was someone in the audience, I don't know what group he represented, but he was apparently a, a tax expert that wanted to be proactive. If this cost shift is something that's really coming, not waiting for the answer and, and participating and shaping up some of the, some of the options there. So, anyway.
Well, it sounds like a lot of important information is being shared. And just say thank you for dedicating the amount of time that you clearly have over the last several weeks to this. And, and not just this. I, I don't think I mentioned at the beginning of my initial report that we all did meet an executive session prior to this. So, we've been at this for two and a half hours just tonight, despite only being in the public session for thirty minutes at this point. As usual, no action was taken during that meeting. But it, there is a lot that goes into it, and, and both at this table and, and outside of the building. So, if there are no other questions, I understand that Lauren Fagel has a report on curriculum, instruction, technology, and assessment, also known as CEDA?
CEDA, yes. Because we are short on acronyms in the world of education, we thought we needed a new one. So, Mike and his colleagues created this long title. But when I describe it to people, I say, I get to oversee the fun stuff. So, just a quick update for you on the different areas that I am privileged to work with in District 115. And Barry will actually be joining me for the technology part of this update. So, in the area of curriculum, I am beginning the conversation with faculty members of the concept of a guaranteed and viable curriculum. This is, in theory, a very simple concept, and in reality, extremely difficult to implement, especially at the high school level. So, a guaranteed and viable curriculum is one where a certain core set of content and skills are guaranteed to be taught to every student in a particular course. Viable is that it is practical and realistic for students to be able to master those core content and skills in a given period of time, a semester or a school year. So, again, on the surface, that seems very simple, but in reality, with the structure of traditional American high schools being very departmentalized, often very autonomous in terms of, you know, just the, the different departments and the different courses within a department, the different content expertise of the teachers, it can be difficult to implement. It is the number one proven effective method for raising student achievement. And what I've asked the faculty to begin thinking about, and I've done this through a curriculum committee that's made up of one representative from each department that is willing to give up their planning period, as often as once a week, but usually two or three times a month, will meet, to think about how this type of curriculum can benefit the students at the high school. And to think about where on the continuum of a guaranteed and viable curriculum they feel their departments and certain courses within their departments already are at. And what would the benefits be from the perspective of a student going from course to course throughout the day? So, this is the beginning of, I think, great conversations. And I have found faculty members to be very receptive and responsive and eager to talk about what currently is in place and where we can work to improve for the benefit of our students. With regard to instruction, what I've listed here is really the different collaborative professional learning opportunities that are taking place at the high school. And the message here is that instruction usually improves when teachers work with their colleagues to improve their own practice. Administrators and districts, we can, we can best service our teachers by providing multiple opportunities for them to work together in order to give each other feedback and improve their practice. That is going to be more effective than any evaluation system or any large group training. Currently, at the high school, we have several KTI's going on. Those are our Kessler Training Institutes. Those are led by both administrators and teachers. And you can see the first five topics listed there are all current KTI's taking place. Those are held after-school hours, and teachers can participate on a volunteer basis. And you can see the variety of topics being discussed there. We also have two PLCs, which stands for Professional Learning Communities. It's another name for a collaborative group of teachers working together towards a common goal. Two different ones that are focused on formative assessment. And that stemmed from some work that Jim Polzin came to the district and started last year, and then, of course, on the Common Core State Standards. We also have a collaborative coaching model at the high school that I wanted to share with the board. We have two teachers, an English teacher and a social studies teacher, who are currently given one period of release time to coach their peers on instructional practices. Again, this is a really powerful model of staff development. It's non-evaluative, it's voluntary, and it's job embedded. So, teachers can take advantage of the opportunity to work with one of these two expert teachers. And then, in turn, I'm working with the coaches on fine-tuning their coaching practices and kind of reading up on the most current research on instructional coaching. So, that's in the area of instruction. Technology, I will turn it over to my esteemed colleague, Mr. Rogers.
So, I'm here today to talk about our main initiative in supporting the board's goal of the use of technology. And our goal is really to use technology, not for the sake of technology in itself, although that's a valuable goal in this day and age, but really to enhance, transform the educational experience, to use technology as a tool to collaborate, investigate, as a point of inquiry, and as a point to open up the world. Part of this initiative, and I think a great starting port to initiate the initiative, is look at our current practices and assess where we are as a school. And it starts with our teachers. So, part of the work we're gonna be doing is assessing the teacher's capacity to be facile with the technology, but also how to use technology in their classroom. I think there's an important distinction to be made. Many of us can get around on a computer, but to use that computer as a tool, again, to collaborate, as a tool for inquiry, as a tool as a classroom instrument, that is something that we need to develop. Secondly, what we're gonna be doing is piloting Chromebooks. Currently, we have a math class that is piloting Chromebooks. We also have four different classes on composition piloting Chromebooks. We also have a number of other devices in the school, which we have been using, Mac devices, Windows devices. So, I think this is gonna give us a lot of more background information in terms of what devices we wanna use going forward. Also, in terms of the, the rollout and what we wanna do for the future, we wanna make sure that the infrastructure's in place. The best planned lesson will not be the best lesson if we don't have the infrastructure behind it. So, moving forward to, we're gonna develop a rollout model. And one of the things we have to look at is scale. A number of our peer districts across the state and across the country are already embarking on these initiatives. So, it's a great time in terms of having these discussions with other districts. We'll be out there investigating, talking to other schools who are doing best practices. We'll be out doing some school visits. But one of the things that we're gonna have to determine is the scale. And so, how, how large we wanna go next year? So, we could go anywhere from a whole school rollout, in terms of technology and one-to-one computing, to simply a small pilot and cohort. And there are also points in between, such as a freshman rollout, freshman sophomore rollout, et cetera. The timeline is gonna be one that's interesting, too, because it's more than just getting the devices in the hands of our students and teachers. It really is coming up with a comprehensive plan for our teachers' development, comprehensive plan for how that technology's gonna be used in the classrooms, how we're gonna use it to assess students, so on and so forth. The device, again, is one of the hot topics of the day, but that's something, again, we'll be exploring. One of the things that we've looked at, different initiatives, and, and most of these initiatives do have some degree of success, but the ones that have the most success are ones who make an investment in the teachers. The box of technology is only one part of the story. It's that ability to use that tool that's really gonna give us the most bounce. And so, what we're gonna be doing is, we're gonna be looking at how we're gonna support teachers, how we're gonna provide learning opportunities for them to develop. One of the options that we're considering is the Summer Institute to help develop our students and help kind of, I'm sorry, help our teachers accelerate their learning along this learning curve. Important question, which we'll all have to ask, is the funding options. One of the good news is that, as, you know, we've looked at this, and I've been working on a similar type of a rollout over the last five years, the devices have come down in price, where the price points are much more manageable. And you can see this in your consumer devices, where at one time, a laptop, a tablet, was definitely well over a thousand dollars. We're now looking at devices that are, that are much more cost-friendly in the sub-500 range. And one of the other things that's gonna be key to this initiative being successful is making sure that we communicate with all of our stakeholders. So, I'm here tonight to talk to the board about it, but we'll also be working closely with our students, with our parents, with our teachers, our teachers' association, to make sure that this is a success. So, that's all for technology, and I'd like to turn it back to Lauren. Thank you.
And then, finally, and I would argue, most importantly, is the talk about assessment. And the reason I say that is because assessment asks us to think about the end in mind. So, whenever we talk about assessment, typically, people think about our standardized state-mandated assessments, the coming of park assessments, but really, the concept of assessment is, is asking us to think about what is the end product? What do we want our students to know and be able to do? The curriculum, the instruction, and the technology will help us reach those goals. A lot of the talk that you'll hear now is a difference between what they call this-generation assessments and next-generation assessments. This-generation assessments are the traditional exams that you're used to hearing about. Our plan test for sophomores, which is a, a, a lead-up to the ACT, our practice SAT exam, both of those exams are being administered next Wednesday for our students. The PSAT is a qualifying exam for the National Merit Scholarship Competition. And it also gives students an opportunity to practice for the real SAT if they choose to take that assessment for their college application process. Plan is, like I said, a lead-up to the ACT, and we can then take that data and use it to determine which students are on track to meet their goals for ACT and college entrance, and which students need intervention in terms of math, reading, and perhaps even test-taking skills. Next-generation assessments, I've heard them described as tests worth taking with texts worth reading and problems worth solving, which makes it sound like really fun to sit down and take those assessments. They almost talked me into wanting to take one. But what we hear about most is Park, and Illinois belongs to Park. Park is one of two major consortiums in the United States that are developing these next-generation assessments to align with Common Core. Illinois is a member, and Park is scheduled to field test in the spring of 2014. Our high school district, along with virtually every high school district in the Chicago area, has been asked to participate in the field test. At the level of our high school, you can see we've been asked to pilot four classes of 11th grade English with an online performance-based assessment, and then, two classes of Algebra I with an online performance-based assessment and an end-of-year assessment. In theory, Park will be completely rolled out in 2014-15 with mandatory PBAs and EOI's, performance-based assessments and end-of-year assessments. The performance-based assessments should take place seventy-five percent of the way through the school year, and the end-of-year assessments should take place ninety percent of the way through the school year. The reason I said, in theory, is because Park is a relatively new organization compared to other longstanding testing companies. And no one is quite certain if they will have the funding and the infrastructure to carry out this very ambitious plan. But what we do know is that our students will be asked to take some assessments aligned to the Common Core. On a more local, daily classroom level, what is really found to be the most effective is formative assessments, the very best kind. These are the informal or formal opportunities that teachers use to gather information and feedback from students and provide feedback to students on how they're doing in terms of mastering that curriculum. And that's really where you get the most bang for your buck, because, again, that is taking place on a daily basis with our teachers and our students. That is our curriculum, instruction, technology, and assessment update. A little bit over the seven-minute mark, but not too much.
Quite all right. Thank you, Lauren. Are there any questions for either Barry or Lauren?
I have a question. Or maybe a comment for Barry on the technology piece? So, Barry, you talked a lot about hardware and sort of teachers' capacity to absorb the use, use of hardware, but as you and I've talked, there's so much going on in the software space for technology that has promises like one-to-one learning, online assessments, the ability to broaden course offerings. Are we giving you the right resources to monitor what's going on in that space? Should it happen at the high school level, or should it happen maybe at shared services level? I guess I'm asking two questions there. One, one about, do we have the resources to monitor what's going on there and be sure that, that we, we were sort of on the, at least monitoring the, the leading edge of that? And should that be something you do, or should it be done at the shared services level?
No, I appreciate that. One of the assets that we do have is we have a shared service model, and we have a elementary-middle school district that has already rolled out a one-to-one computing initiative, and has some great people doing great work on the ground. So, not only are we gonna be looking at the best practices of other schools, as I mentioned, we'll be looking internally, in-house, if you will, at some of those best practices. The software space, that space has been moving rather quickly. I think there was a period of time where the major textbook vendors were basically holding to a business model for a long time, that they could sell a hundred and thirty or a hundred and forty-dollar textbook. And just like the blockbusters of the world, you know, their time has come. And now, they're moving quickly to buy up companies, to, to look at applications that are web-based, cutting-edge, leading-edge. And so, this space is moving so rapidly. It's been a study of mine, but I think it's really something that, it's not, it's something that shouldn't be owned by a third party. It needs to be owned by all of us. So, I'm asking my leadership team in their own individual disciplines, I wanna know what the best thing out there right now is for math. I wanna know what are the most, the best things that are happening in terms of using inquiry in social science. I wanna see the best things that are being used for literacy and coming together. That being said, there's so much out there that we will have to come to agreement on some common platforms, specifically, things like a learning management system, tools that, for the user as well. One of the great things we have coming out, you know, we're eagerly awaiting it, is the rollout of our new website, and that will have some functionality. And I think some of the other goals that we've talked about, in terms of like emotional wellness and balance in our lives, I think these are things that we need to keep in touch with as we roll out technology as well. As we start to look at the, the actual website, if it's, if it becomes a, a process where there's a large cognitive load, just to kind of find out what your homework is and find out how to do the assignment, that's not in the best interest of students. So, I think we all need to own this work, and I think it is exciting space to be. That being said, I can tell you, the landscape is totally different than it was twelve months ago.
That's a topic I think we're gonna talk about at our next education committee meeting as well. Monty has brought it up, and we, we do need to start finding out what you need.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And I think that's really exciting work, and I think our teachers are really gearing up for this work as well.
Barry, one more question for you. In working with the universities, I meet with chief information officers, and we'll talk about how they have students' internships to do everything from website development to, to Java programming, anything like that. I don't know what we have from a curriculum perspective, but are there opportunities to help out with the technology, even if it isn't part of the curriculum? Any of the students showing interest in participating, in understanding how our technology works, and, and maybe getting a sort of little internship themselves? Just curious.
No, I think there's tremendous opportunities. There are some schools that have some model tech crew programs, for instance, where a lot of the students actually monitor a lot of what's going on. At my former school, we actually had a student that was designing our programming system for programming classes, and went on to have a business for himself later on in life doing exactly that. So, there are tremendous opportunities for students to get involved. That's part of what we need to do. Now, I've talked pretty much about how the one-to-one initiative affects the classrooms and how it can affect all classrooms. But I think there's specific things on the curricular side, in, in terms of offerings and pathways, that deal with technology. So, there are classes in terms of computational thinking, which is an entry-level class, there are classes on, on Java and database, there are classes that you can do on robotics and design. We actually have a, a new class that we're considering right now on animation, which we think the kids will really enjoy. So, I think there's certainly some exciting things that we can do on the curricular side, getting kids involved with tech crew. We're looking at, starting a robotics team, so there's, the, the main thing that I think we need to do, and it's in our charge, is just really create opportunities around technology. And what we find is, if those opportunities are there for kids, when they have some solid guidance... they have some solid guidance, sky's the limit.
That's great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, one additional question. This kind of pertains to what Dave was talking about at the Ed Redd Conference, and with Park and Common Core, is Common Core settled? Because I was surprised where there was talk about deferring it for another year, or thought it was pretty much...
Sure, and Lauren, I'm going to turn it over to Lauren. This is a kind of a topic of conversation we have, but I think Lauren's the best one to handle this one. Okay.
So yeah, throughout the summer, there were states who were choosing to make statements or pass legislation that said they were going to slow down, or delay, I think was the word, and it sounds like some people in our state have proposed that legislation. I don't see that coming in Illinois. Illinois has been, it's on the governing board of Park. I think Illinois is very committed to the Common Core state standards, and hopefully, over the next several months, through curriculum coffees and board meetings and APT meetings, I, along with other leaders in the district and teachers, can really, you know, show that the Common Core, as I've mentioned, is an opportunity, one that I think is really valuable. Whether or not Park comes to fruition, there will be assessments that the state ultimately asks us to take. I wouldn't be surprised if there are, if it doesn't go according to the exact timeline that they've laid out. And so we just continue to stay focused on our kids, on our local assessments, and on keeping the bar really high. But I don't, I don't see Illinois being one of those states that decides to take legislative action and delay, or even step away completely from it. Does that answer your question?
Thank you.
Okay.
For the moment.
Yeah, it's by the moment, so.
Don't step down.
Now that I've got you. Historically, the district has presented an assessment report in the early winter.
Yes.
The general timeframe.
Yes.
There hasn't been any discussion about that, at least in my presence.
Yes, yes, I am working...
I'm just curious, is that going to continue?
Mm-hmm.
And will it cover the same types of ground?
Exactly. So Thor Benson and I are working together to prepare that for the December board meeting. It will look very much like reports you have received over the past years, including the most up-to-the-minute, you know, information that we have on these new assessments. I do, over the next several years, see that report changing. I would like it to include some more laser-focused data that's a little bit more classroom-level based, right? I think it would be helpful for the board to see other types of assessment data, student work samples, benchmarking. Are students who struggle with reading are taking more frequent assessments? What's their progress in those areas? So there are lots of other types of assessment that are not currently included in there, but for this first go-around, it will look similar.
Well, I just want to say that's a breath of fresh air. It's, you know, something that's near and dear to my heart. I've always felt like there was plenty of potential for us to, to look at more robustly, you know, what we want to be and where we are along the continuum of getting there. And I'm pleased to hear that and look forward to, you know, participating in any way I can. So thank you.
Great.
No further questions? Thank you, Lauren, very, very much. Can move on to board committee updates. I'm going to guess that there's not a lot here, but for the Education Committee, Mrs. Snoblan?
The Education Committee has not met since our last board meeting. Our next meeting is November 6.
Thank you. Board Finance and Operations Committee, I think there's a very similar answer coming.
Actually, an identical answer. You may remember, we met the day before our prior board meeting in September, and our next meeting is also scheduled for November 6, 7:30 a.m. in the Wedge Cafe at East Campus, as always, open to the public and other board members. So if you have interest, I'd encourage you to attend.
Thank you. And as it turns out, both of those meetings will happen the day after our next regularly scheduled board meeting. So just remember these answers in November, because they won't change much, I'm afraid. Action items, liaison reports, we don't have any actually. We just received one. I think Mr. Schreiber's report could have easily been here, but I think we all enjoyed it where it was. Action items, the first is the approval of Press Issue 81 and 82 policy updates. Mr. Simic?
Thank you, Mr. Bergner. I recommend that these be approved as presented. The Policy Committee met. There's also a joint Policy Committee meeting, and what you see here is the best thinking of the group. Many of these updates are changes in citations and very perfunctory changes. A number of them have also been set aside as rewrites because they simply don't apply as they were, as they were recommended by the Illinois School Board Association. One comment on this, it is unusual, and it is of real service from the School Board Association to provide policies and policy review and policy updates for school boards as a part of the annual dues. Most districts either manage their own policies and struggle mightily to do so, or pay very significant fees between $6,000 and $8,000 annually to have an outside firm assist them in the management of the fees. And so these policy updates that you see are things that are ongoing from the School Board Association. While not always perfect, they are, in general, quite well done.
Thank you. Are there questions?
Just a comment. I am newly assigned to the Policy Committee by Todd, and I was expecting it to be an extremely dull process, and it was not. In fact, it was very, very interesting. And one thing that's changed this year is that staff members are involved in those Policy Committee meetings as well. Alan and Jen Hermes were there, which was very helpful, because there were times when the policies being proposed differed from our normal practice. So we were able to say, you know, why is our practice what it is? What needs to change, the policy or the practice? Those are the ones that are set aside for rewrites, because in virtually every case, our policy or our practice made much more sense to, to our district than the proposed policies. So it was a really good process. It led to some really great discussions, and I look forward to future meetings of the Policy Committee, not something I ever thought I would say.
You're welcome.
Is it...
Mr. President, I have a question. It wasn't clear to me, not being on the Policy Committee this go-around, although having been on the committee in the past, I agree with you, Nikki. It is an interesting role, and a thoughtful one. But it wasn't clear to me, the coding that we received, in some cases, for instance, I point to 4:140, where you're saying no in terms of adopted as presented by IASB, and then rewrite under adopted with district edits, and yet there was a copy of this policy behind the summary sheet. I presume that was not the rewritten policy. There was no way to discern that.
That's correct.
So the only policies we're approving tonight are those marked yes in summary form. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Block. That's good clarification. Now, I'm going to need some help with this. This is a first reading, or is this just a straight-up approval of the policies as they've been presented? I don't recall.
Okay, so the answer to the question is, the practices for the board, the board has the opportunity to waive the first reading. You can do that at this meeting, and then approve them in the same meeting as the second reading. Different boards do this different ways, but that's the common practice here.
Alternatively, we would approve the first reading and bring them back at a future meeting for final approval.
Correct.
So I would look for a motion to waive the first reading and to go on to second reading and approval at this meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Is there a roll call, please?
Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblan?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mr. Schreiber?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Bergner?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Moving on to approval of emergency structural repairs. Mr. Simic or Mr. Alves?
Thank you, Mr. Bergner. We have, I'd like to pass on a compliment that I recently heard about Mrs. White, who is our Joint Services in charge of operations. She did a conference recently, and one of the people at the conference works with people all over the state and actually all over the nation, and comes in contact with a great many facilities' people. And Mrs. White is unusual in her position in that there are very few women that hold that position, but she's also unusual, in this person's estimation, because she is one of the very best that he's ever seen in the field, and he wanted to pass that compliment on. Because she knows her business, is all about the business, and is super-hardworking and honest all-in-one, and just wanted to pass that on. So, and she's also been very busy with a very unusual repair at the high school. Mr. Alves?
One of the scheduled summer projects was a partial roof replacement at East Campus, and this isn't the easiest diagram to decipher, but I believe the front door is here. And the section that we're talking about is back in here. The way Carol described this to me is that the roofs, the membranes of the roofs attach to the buildings. Now, this isn't the membrane. This is a temporary one, but it looks similar to this. So as they were replacing the roof and taking the membrane section off, a section of bricks dislodged, fell down between the buildings, crashed through the ceiling, and into the Resource Center, which was the old library, if you're familiar before the renovations. I'm estimating, by looking at the number of bricks here, this is probably about an 18 by 18 section of brick. What they discovered in examining this is that there's a section of the roof that really spans about the area of the black tarp here. It's about 13, 14 feet, where there's structural steel missing underneath. So that means from the time that that portion of the building was built, those bricks had been held on by the mortar to the cinder block only. And then pulling that roof membrane off was enough to dislodge it and cause that piece to fall. So this happened around August 20th or August 21st. We immediately contacted our architect, who the next day, I believe, sent out structural engineers to look at They had us close off a portion of the building, and then provided direction on building temporary shoring to secure the area above. And I don't know if it'll show up here. I can't tell the resolution from this angle, but right about here is where the beam ends. And then to the right of that, where, if you can see, I can't tell from this angle. Can you see that? Or is that, you can't see? I apologize for that. You can see the gap of where the steel is missing. So we needed a solution to that, and that took about a month to get the drawings completed. We got those on September 26th, and then asked Pepper Construction to solicit prices from masons and steel fabricators on this. They turned around and gave us pricing on October 3rd, and that's what's in your packet tonight. I'm going to read a couple of sections now from the school law survey. "An emergency is a situation that presents an imminent and continuing threat to the health and safety of students or other occupants of a facility, requires complete or partial evacuation of the building or part of the building," which this has, "or consumes one or more of the five emergency days built into the adopted calendar of the school district or schools, or would otherwise be expected to cause such school or schools to fall short of the minimum school calendar requirements." It goes on to say, "If the estimated cost to effectuate emergency repairs is greater than the amount specified in the bidding statute, then the school district must proceed in conformity with the bidding statute." So that's a whole different section of the school code. And what that says is expenditures in excess of $25,000, or a single project in excess of $50,000, must be bid, but there are exceptions to that. One of those exceptions is where the board votes to make an emergency repair, but in doing so, it requires three-quarters majority of the board. A three-quarter majority of the board is five and a quarter. So that rounds up to six, because I haven't figured out how to slice and dice that one up yet. But that's regardless of whether there are seven members present or six members present. If there are five members present, can't take the vote. So the recommendation to you tonight is to award this to Pepper, who will lend, the pricing that they received on the masonry included pricing from Ahorn Masonry, and that was the low bidder, and the recommended bidder, Jimmy Z's Masonry, and J.E. Duff. On the structural steel, it was David Architectural, who is the low bidder for the structural steel, Nix Metal, or Kingery Steel. In your packet is a breakout of the budget summary. The entire project is, I believe, $66,893, which includes a 10% contingency, a Pepper fee of 3%, a couple of allowances on MEP, the mechanical and the lighting, if there's a need to relocate that during the construction. And as you can see on the estimate summary report, drywall, flooring, acoustical ceiling, painting. Now, a lot of that ancillary work, the drywalling, the painting, will be done by the project manager assigned to it. So we get a dual purpose. He coordinates the work with the trades, but will also perform this as well. So the recommendation is to award this to Pepper in the amount of $66,893. If, because there are only six members present tonight, that requires a unanimous vote. If there is not a comfort level approving this, then what we would do is break this down into separate bid packages and bid it out. That would slow down the process, and one of the reasons we chose to go this route is we have an exposed building and winter coming. And so we wanted to expedite as fast as we could the repairs and reopen and occupy the area that's been affected. Any questions?
Yeah, Alan, it would help me a great deal if you could just clarify a little bit further. My understanding is of the roughly $66,900 in total, you're asking us to approve tonight. Only $4,650 under the heading Construction Management Services, and the fee amount on everything else, the $62,243, which comes to $1,813. Those would be the only monies paid to Pepper. Is that correct? I shouldn't say paid to Pepper, because all the monies would go through Pepper.
And then they disperse it.
And then they would reimburse. But those are the only monies eventually ending up in Pepper's hands. Is that correct?
Almost. In the estimate summary... In the estimate summary report, the last line on there, which says Construction reimbursables, I think it's a Phase 9200 for $13,976. If you go back through the detail reports, and I've gotten used to reading these now having worked with them for a while, that would be for a project foreman. That would be a Pepper employee. That's the person doing the ancillary work. And that's estimated to be 120 hours at $116 unit cost per hour. So that would be the project foreman on the job. The $4,000 you referenced is the person who's coordinated this to this point and put it together and then pursues the waiver of lien. And then there was a slight charge, I think, for an accountant on there as well to work with the building.
And the fee itself.
And then the 3% fee would be, is really their profit on the job.
At least what they're willing to say is the profit, but we don't want to go into that. So what you're saying then is the total monies here, the total expenditure, which would be non-bid, if I can use that term, is what I'm trying to get at. It appears it would be somewhere in the neighborhood of $20,000. And Pepper has bid, gotten three bids in each of the other major trade areas. Is that correct?
They've solicited prices. They went out to three structural steel companies and solicited competitive pricing. Now, I say solicited versus bidding because in my mind, bidding is placing a notice in the newspaper. There's a specified time period that you have to wait, then you open the bids. So that was not done to expedite the process here.
Okay, I mean, they used the term, we have bid the major trades and have received three proposals from qualified contractors for these trades. So, well, I'll reverse it. Tell me if I'm wrong. My understanding is that somewhere in the neighborhood of $47,000 has been bid competitively or at least proposals have been received, if you use your terminology, on $47,000 worth of this, and only about $20,000 would be non-competitively awarded. Were we to approve this?
I think it's easiest to talk from this sheet than the volume that's there. That would be the masonry cost, and I said who that was. That would go to A-Horn, A. Horn Masonry. That number, the 20,00615, is the structural steel cost. That would go to David Architectural. And then as you walk down through the other items, you look and you see membrane roofing, fire stopping, gypsum, drywall. These are really allocations, material allocations. MEP, relocate allowance, painting. So those are allowances to complete the facade work or the interior work there. And then the $13,976, as I said, would be the project manager assigned. And then there's one other breakout cost, which is Construction Management reimbursables, and that's the overall project supervisor and the accountant for $4470. And when all those are totaled up, that's where we get to the number I cited earlier of the $66,893.
Okay, so it's really about $30,000 in round numbers that has been bid on a project that in terms of direct costs at least would be on the order of double that. I'm excluding contingency and general liability insurance and the Pepper fee. About half of it would have been bid competitively. I get some comfort out of that, is all I'm trying to get to.
Okay.
At least, I was hoping it was more than that, but I do get comfort out of the fact that half of it was bid competitively. Secondly, do we, do we know what happened here? I mean, was this part of the 1990 addition?
I believe so. And it's a structural deficiency.
Was this an engineering? I mean, was it a design error? Was it a construction error? Do we know whether it was designed and not installed or?
Yeah, having not been, I assume, I would assume, it's not a designer. I would assume it was a building error. I've made several calls about, do we have cause to pursue? And I've been told no, because of the amount of time that's gone by that we wouldn't get anywhere.
My question boils down to, is there someone else, somewhere else we can look to for reimbursement of these expenses? And what I'm hearing is that that's something you're going to pursue?
No, I have pursued. I talked to our architect about it and I talked to our insurance consultant about it, and both of them told me if we're talking decades, that we're not going to be able to pursue it. I don't know if you have any more insight on?
If you're certain about the work being related to something from 1990 and not from something, alterations that were made in '07, '08 during the referendum, we're sure of that?
Yes.
And I'm not a lawyer, but I sometimes pretend to be. My understanding is that there's a 10-year statute of repos in which you can discover this, and if we're outside of that, then?
That's the number that both the architect and the insurance advisor cited.
That would be consistent with my experience as well.
Okay.
For whatever that's worth. So that hung for, just hung there on its own, under its own weight for 20 years?
Right. It was mortar to the cinder block, but there was nothing underneath it supporting it.
Well, apparently the membrane provided some level of support because when you pulled it out, that's when the piece.
Or maybe that was just enough to dislodge it, but, right. Other questions?
Alan, where does, where do you, where would we find this in the budget? For example, we probably have some allowances for regular maintenance of the building. Just curious, this isn't maintenance, I'm not, but where would we map this back into the budget?
Repairs. We carry a repair line based, you know, when we build a budget, we use a lot of methodologies. A lot of it is zero-based, you know? So when we do salaries, we start person by person. But there are some components of the budget, like repairs, that we will budget based on historical averages. So we'll look at last year and then we'll look at, was last year an anomaly compared to the years prior? And if not, that gives us an idea of what to expect. But then as the year goes on, we try to, you know, we'll try to do things to offset this as well.
So this is well above the repair budget then? Is that fair to say, as it stands right now?
No, I, no, I'm not, no, I'm sorry if I miscommunicated that. I think the repair budget is much higher than this amount, but this would be charged against that budget. So then we'll look at other things and, you know, try to be judicious as we go through the year because we know we've incurred this.
Great, thanks.
Alan, just as far as the miscellaneous metal, for the structural steel, what size span are we talking about here? You know, roughly?
I was told it was about a 14-foot span, but I don't know. I think that's a cross. Now, what goes underneath that, I don't know. I haven't looked at the drawings that are required, so I'm not sure how much steel is involved. But this was solicited to three steel fabricators, and this was the lowest price that was received.
Okay. That number just seems kind of high for 14 feet. I know that probably includes welding and the crane and?
Yeah, I think some of it, the location is going to, might be an issue with the work too because of where it's located, you know, getting it in there and fitting it between the buildings.
Okay. And then also, then the 10% contingency, that's just a, basically a holdback, but not necessarily going to be spent?
Correct. Well, there'd be a couple of things there. So the MEP relocate allowance, we may use that, we may not. And then the other things are estimates. So when it crashed through, it damaged the ceiling, so there's an allowance in there for the acoustical ceiling replacement.
Since we didn't hear anything, I assume nobody was in?
No, luckily it was August and the area wasn't occupied. I was trying to think back when it was the old library because this came down by a wall. And I'm not sure there was a wall in this location prior to '07, so that might have been a different, different experience.
That's all I?
Are there any other questions or comments? If not, may I please have a motion for the approval of the emergency structural repairs?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblen?
Aye.
Mr. Schreiber?
Aye.
Mr. Berger?
Aye. Motion is carried. Moving on, the approval of the Human Resources Report. Mr. Hendrickson, is there anything beyond what's in our packet that you'd like to add?
[inaudible] Any other time here?
Okay. Are there any questions or discussion about the Human Resources Report? If not, may I have a motion to approve the Human Resources Report as presented in our board packet?
So moved.
Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mr. Schreiber?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblen?
Aye.
Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Berger?
Aye. Motion is carried. Next, we have the Consent Agenda, which includes approval of disbursements, payrolls, and financial statements for July, August of 2013, minutes of a regular meeting from September 17th, 2013, minutes of an executive session September 17th, 2013, and disposal of audio recordings from January 9th of 2012. If there is a member who would like any item removed from the Consent Agenda for separate consideration, please speak now. If not, may I have a motion for approval of the Consent Agenda?
I move that we approve the Consent Agenda.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
And a roll call?
Mrs. Snoblen?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mr. Schreiber?
Aye.
Mr. Berger?
Aye. Motion is carried. We had just one Freedom of Information request from a John Barron representative from the United Union of Roofers, Waterproofers, and Allied Workers this month. So a good, slow month for FOIA requests. Announcements following up on Mr. Rogers, we've got the Junior/Senior Play on October 10th through the 12th. Columbus Day, there will be no school on Monday, October 14th. Planned PSAT testing is on Wednesday, October 16th. We have a late start day on Wednesday, October 23rd. And our next Board of Education meeting will be on Tuesday, November 5th of this year. That's one week earlier than it was originally scheduled. And that is just in time, right? And that's it. So if we can have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?[1694.01]